Good evening and welcome. Could we, those that wish, please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was rescheduled and Meghan Turnbull already had the prior commitment for tonight. So, Mr. Rubine.
Was he already at the podium?
I think it's Peter Pan.
Yes, I'm Dean Rubine from New Hampshire. And I'm Peter Pan by the Oyster River Players is going to be performed this weekend, Friday night and Saturday night at 7:00 and Saturday and Sunday at 1:00 p.m., matinee, at Exeter Town Hall. Though they're not actually related to the school district, a lot of the kids are, most of the kids are from Oyster, students. I'll be quick, looks like a short meeting. Congratulations on a very productive December. It's knocked off all the important issues. I heard rumor that there, you guys are thinking, though I don't see it on the agenda, about new classrooms at Mohermit. I tried to look up in the Capitol Plan whether they were there. I suspect they're not. I couldn't find the Capitol Plan either, so I'm not sure. I'm hoping we can get the old minutes and the old reports back on the website. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
May I just take a moment?
You may.
Dean, just in, I know we don't normally do the dialogue, but I wanted to let you know that the search feature on the new website will get, you just put it in and it should come up. And if it doesn't, let me know and I'll talk to Josh.
Anybody else? We'll move right along. Approval of the minutes of 12:18.
Madam Chair, if I could make an amendment that Al moved and Tom seconded that we come out of a non-public meeting at about 10 o'clock and that a roll call vote was called to the affirmative and that, I believe it was Kenny and Al moved to adjourn about 10:05.
They moved to come out of the meeting at 10 o'clock?
Come out of non-public.
Was it a non-public or?
It was a non-public.
Non-public, roll call.
And then upon roll call vote, it was adjourned at 10:05?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
I think Ken.
I move to accept the minutes of the December 18th school board meeting.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Seconded by Al. Thank you. Any corrections? Kenny?
Corrections to the corrections. Val Cox is, it should read that she is opposed to the K234.
Correct.
And although excused probably is okay for the, for what I did, I think the better word would be recused.
I can't hear you.
Better word would be recused rather than excused. So those are the changes.
Well, it says that she is opposed to the model. Or should they swap?
Right.
And then instead of excused, you would like it to say recused.
Recused, right. I think that would be better.
Further, on page three, the motion failed two to five. And I was the one, Meghan, was one of the five. I was one of the two.
Right. I'll give that to you, too. Do you need this anywhere?
No, I do not.
Okay, let me get to the other.
So who are the two that failed?
It was Maria and Anne.
Two in the affirmative. And it was Maria Barth and Anne Lane.
Okay, and it was five opposed. Got it. Thank you.
Anything further?
Lori, do you keep a record when there is a split vote of who is in the affirmative and who is in the negative?
It says right in the minutes.
It does, okay. Because it's really important to keep that in case the board wants to revisit the issue.
It says the motion failed two to five with Meghan Turnbull and Anne Lane voting in favor of the motion. The student representative opposed this motion.
But that's not changed.
No, and that's now changed, but that's how I do it in the minutes so that it's always, it's always recorded. So in this case, so we could amend it to make it right, so.
Thanks.
Further corrections, deletions? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. Announcements and commendations, which we skipped last time, I think.
I wasn't actually planning to say anything except I just checked my email and found out that Meghan Doody from the Oyster River Girls Cross Country Team was named Gatorade Runner of the Year this year.
Wow.
So it's pretty impressive. So she was on Channel 9 tonight. I missed it unfortunately, but I'll try to catch it at 11 o'clock. So, pretty exciting honor. That means she's basically the best runner in the state of New Hampshire, so pretty cool. Doody, D-O-O-D-Y, and Meghan is M-A-E-G-A-N.
Wonderful. Having no other administrators. Does the board have anything? Kenny?
A couple of things. One, I just want to really thank the community for their involvement in the resolution of the issues that we settled in December. I think the public input, we got the input from staff, administrators, was all incredibly helpful. I'm sure there are some maybe not pleased with some of the decisions, but I think we worked hard to come to fair decisions and tried to do them in a timely way. And I thank fellow board members, we had differences of opinion, and I think we handled it in a respectful way. The other thing is, and I don't know protocol, but I think it would be very pertinent for the board to send a note of thank you to Shirley Thompson for her gift to the track fund. Shirley has served our community amazingly for years. She was on our school board year after year. There were times when someone left the school board and she stepped in as a felon. She reads at Mohermit weekly, very, very involved, a very unique and special person in our community, and I think she should be recognized. And I think a formal acknowledgement from us would be in order. And I personally thank Shirley.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else?
I, based on interest in the community over the last decade that I've been listening, we've had enormous interest in getting language into our elementary schools. Coming up on February 12th, U&amp;H at the CSDC, they're holding a dual-language learning in early childhood with Dr. Patton Tabers. It's at, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the CSDC. And I think it could be a very informative evening for those who are interested in bringing language to our youngest learners.
When is that in?
February 12th.
And where?
It's at the C-SDC. That's the, that's where the.
It's by the cow barns. It's the.
By the cow. Okay. All right. Anything else? Great. Thank you. District reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have an inquiry by an abutting landowner, the Jaegers, as to whether we'd be interested in their property. Mr. Jaeger's property basically surrounds the tennis courts and goes from, say, to just the left of the tennis courts all the way up to the highway. And so I sent an email out to Sue and Jim Rosiski, our facilities director, as well as Todd and Corey, our athletic director, to see if they would form a kind of a little action committee to investigate the property as to its feasibility and fitting into our facilities plan, our athletic plan, and so forth, and report back to the board at our next board meeting, at least tentatively, whether it is something that we should be taking, you know, under more serious advisement and have more detailed report done. But initially, we need to have the, in particular, I'm interested in the athletic director and high school principals' reaction to that property as potential expansion for our athletic facilities, because as you all know, the high school is pretty much hemmed in. So I walked it with Mr. Jaeger. He seems like a really great neighbor and the parts of it that I walked literally surround the houses and it's very, very hilly. But I'm more curious from Todd's and Jim Rosiski's and Corey's and Sue's perspective whether, as the property expands out towards the highway, whether it's something that's viable for us to think about.
Do we know if there's any limitations, zoning limitations on the property?
We know nothing about the property as we sit here, other than that Mr. Jaeger is interested in whether we're interested. So that's part of the work that, at least this initial look see that I'd ask our administrators.
Kenny?
Would it be of value to perhaps have Todd Zalik included in that group? And I think the extent of land is, I think it goes all the way towards.
Mr. Jaeger met with me and I know that he went down to see the town administrator. I can talk to call and see if he's interested in participating. Absolutely. You know, I don't know what his conversation with Mr. Jaeger entailed, so I can find that out as well.
It might actually be a joint town-school kind of project.
Be glad to do that.
And parking for the buses.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's not athletics, it may offer other benefits that we're not thinking about today as the team looks at the property. There may be other things that just aren't at the surface level coming to light, but as they walk in and have a conversation, they may be able to come back and give you guys a better sense of what those, what needs it could need. I also wanted to make sure that you knew, and we had this long, unusually long break between Christmas and New Year's, and so the letter out to the parents and guardians of those impacted by your decision related to redistricting on December 18th. That letter's been crafted. It's going out to all the homes that we can possibly figure out how to get them to. We get the voter list, we get the property owner list, which is, they parallel. My intent is not just to send it to the parents and guardians, but to send it out to canvas those roads thoroughly, even if they don't have children. So the other part of who I want to communicate with, of course, is our own staff, so everybody has your decision and they understand it. And then the third group are the real estate agents. And we'll reach out to real estate agents, not only in our community, but reach out to them for guidance on who else we should send that to, because clearly, you know, all the property sold isn't sold by real estate agents who live in our district, some of it. So I'm going to take their advice and send it out. So I'm going to try to do as comprehensive a mailing of that letter as possible. We'll put it on the website. And hopefully, we will have tapped into as many people as we possibly can, and the word of mouth hopefully will travel through those communities. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that was being done. I'm also writing a letter for each of the three towns in their town reports about this past 12 months and, you know, as Kenny alluded to, the major decisions that have been made that impact the community from, you know, Barrington contract, by the way, the state board approved that. Now we wait for the voters to approve it, to the redistricting, the rerouting of the buses, the budget, of course, the Mohermit gym addition are all part of the substance of that town report. And so that will appear in all three towns, so it's a way for us to communicate, not just internally, but externally to our communities. So those are the three things I wanted to make sure that you were aware of tonight.
Thank you. The business administrator?
You will shortly, right?
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, just a brief update on what we're doing with the student senate. Right now, we're planning a fundraiser that we call Friends and Benefits. And what that is, is basically, it's a game show where students can compete against each other. And we'll have couples, we'll have siblings, and we'll have close friends. And a mediator will ask questions to see how well the two contestants know each other. And the group of contestants that knows each other the best will ultimately win. And that'll be taking place on February 13th, so. That's all I have to report.
Is it cheating to be twins?
I don't know. You'll have to talk to your grandchildren.
My grandchildren?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Any other reports? The draft warrant articles.
Before we go there, we have some negotiations. Do you have that on yours?
I don't.
Oh.
I'll put it in.
Thanks. So Guild negotiations update. First of all, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Tom and Anne and Al for the yeomanz hours that you put in in negotiations. I also would start out by saying thank you to the Guild. The dialogue at times gets tense, but in the end, I thought that the conversation around the contract was incredible. I think people came to the table in the thick of it to say, we're going to have a settlement before we break for Christmas, and we spent an all-day session doing that. I just want to remind the board that you had a number of goals as we started out, and one was to, was connected to our budget, which is to have an overall increase of 2% or less inclusive of this agreement. What we'll be presenting when Sue comes up is a budget, proposed budget increase to the voters of 1.7%. So kudos to the board for establishing strong goals in relation to the budget and relation to negotiations. The major issues that were accomplished in negotiations are the same major issues that you're seeing faced across this country in private as well as public workplace, and that is health care. And you established health care is the number one issue that you wanted your team to work on with the teachers. I will tell you that it was, it is the toughest issue for employees to deal with because health care is sacred in this country, as you all know. And we knew it would be tough sledding, but I have to commend the Guild, our Teachers' Association, for their willingness to have that very difficult conversation. And as a result of our negotiations, we have lowered our health care cost by $295,701, which is incredible. And the way that we did that is we negotiated a contract where we walked away from, with the Guild, where we walked away from the COF 100 Plan being the benchmark against which everything was measured. And we agreed to go to a Blue Cross, a Blue Shield product, and increase the pharmacy card to 10, 20, and 45, all of which resulted in this incredible savings to the district. And in turn, we applied that savings to the teachers in order to be able to give them a reasonable pay increase. In the year one of this contract, it's a three-year contract, we're offering the teachers a 2% increase plus their steps, and we've added $500 to the last step. Now, these numbers I'm sharing are all-inclusive in the bottom line, so these aren't in addition to. In year two and three, we offered the teachers 1.5% and $250 on the last step. And, you know, that last step language may seem insignificant to the public or to the board this evening, it won't, to the negotiating team, because fully two-thirds of our teaching staff are at the top of the scale. And in the last round of negotiations, what we were able to do on our side is analyze the impact of the last negotiated agreement on our very senior staff, those who are at the top of the scale. And we were able to articulate to the teachers, and they were able to articulate back to us, that the top of the scale and the current paradigm we use for pay increases actually lost ground over the last three years. And so this was our attempt to make sure that we honored those who are honoring us by staying and working for us through their lifetime. So that was achieved. The teachers currently receive $400 on their annuity. They asked for a $100 increase. The boards team agreed to that request, and so in this upcoming contract, they'll have $500 towards their annuity. When the warrants are crafted, and Sue will have these in a little bit, what you'll see for increases in the warrant are $319,827 in year one, 1415, $441,969 in year two, 1516, and $429,169 in 2016-17. If you compared those three numbers to the last time we put warrants in front of the voters to approve, they are, the first one is much lower than where we ended in the third year because of the insurance savings. And then the next two are only modestly higher than what they were in the last round of negotiations. So again, you don't come to those kind of conclusions without the cooperation and full participation of the Guild. And they came fully prepared to work with the district because they recognize the times we're in. Some minor changes to the contract in terms of grievances being, if we have a grievance, the Guild agreed to be very specific on what part of the contract they felt was being violated. That was our language, and they agreed to it. The salary schedule, I've already talked about. We moved away from an automatic 2% increase on stipends to 1%, so that was cut in half. And in terms of the health insurance, again, the district participation is going to be 89% in year one, 88% in year two, and 87% in year three. Again, a pretty major change from current practice. We agreed to ask the board annually whether they would, would they allow a specific number of employees to benefit in a retirement incentive, much like what we did last year for our entire population, but this would be much more focused. And another major, major concession by the Guild, and again, one that is really incredible, is they had six personal days and they agreed to reduce that to four. And in exchange, the board offered bereavement leave, which is much more specific leave in terms of the death of someone in your immediate family or extended family. And some minor language-related professional development. And you may recall, last year, the board chose to eliminate from policy the language that allowed the Guild, through policy, to have their payroll deductions done through payroll. And at the time, when the Guild talked to me about it, I said that we would support it being in their contract. And the last thing on this summary is that we did include that language in their contract. So I have to say that I am very proud of the work both teams did. It was very deliberate, it was tough work, and yet we came to, I think, a very amiable and professional conclusion to pretty tough negotiations.
Has the Guild voted on?
The Guild voted last night 99 to 1 in support of this agreement. So tonight, it would be, if this meets the board's pleasure, we'd ask for a motion to support the negotiated agreement and a second, an approval, if that's what you wish to do. And then it will be part of our warrants in March.
Tell.
I'd like to make a motion to support the Guild district, am I calling the contract? Is that?
What do you call it, the Guild contract?
Yes.
Negotiated agreement.
Yeah, negotiated, to approve or to support the Guild district.
Agreement with the Oyster River Teachers Guild.
Seconded by Tom. Yeah, you have to wave. Kenny?
And I will, of course, recuse myself from this discussion and vote.
Thank you.
Just so the public knows, the reason that the board member, Radner, has recused himself is his wife is impacted by this decision and the contract, so greatly appreciate the ethics involved in doing that. Kenny?
Discussion. Hearing none. Could we see a show of hands? Five in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
It'd be six. Kenny?
Meghan?
Kenny, 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 Kenny. Sorry.
And the student voted.
Well, thank you very much. I know the teachers will appreciate your affirmation of their vote last night.
Moving right along. Draft warrant articles.
So we'll turn it over to our esteemed business manager.
Thank you. So we went ahead and made those changes on your warrant. You have those, correct? Did Wendy send that off to you? If you don't, I brought extra copies.
I don't have them.
There you go.
So you have extra copies for the public?
I do.
I don't have them.
You don't have?
Need another one?
Is it in the pack? Oh, there's one in the pack, right?
No.
Or in the folder?
No.
We've got a warrant article portfolio, but I don't have a choice.
No, I have one, I accept that.
Kenny on the board?
Yes.
You have it?
Is this different than the one where you?
She sent it, right?
It has the numbers in it.
Okay.
Should be looking at a draft warrant article that actually has the numbers related to the teacher's contract.
Well, see, this is, now the numbers are right.
Is there another copy?
The numbers.
Okay. We can share.
So do you guys have an extra week to share?
Here, we already shared, Kenny.
We already shared.
I can share.
So Sue, again, like the last time we did, just so the board can act accordingly, go through one at a time.
I can go through one at a time, sure. The only, I'm not going to read the first part, but I will tell you that I asked the question is why, under Articles 3 through, there's a blank there. And the reason there's a blank there is because we really don't know how many warrant articles there will be after we go through public hearing. So you haven't, you're not making your final decision, so we've left that open. As it stands right now, there are eight, but we will change that after the public hearing. So Article 1 is to choose a moderator. Article 2, two at-large school board members for three years. And then Article 3 is the Guild's warrant article. Want me to read the whole thing? Yes?
No, I just want to make sure you stop so that if they have questions on any particular article, it's not kind of running.
Okay, sure. So again, Article 3, we've inserted the three years that Dr. Morris just presented those numbers for each year of the contract. Questions on that? Article 4, this is the article that utilizes the funds from Health Trust for building the cafeteria at Mohermit School. I think we changed this a little bit over the last board meeting.
Right. We were getting lots of feedback from you. We've gone back and forth with our attorney to try to make it user-friendly.
And I can't say that we're done with that because I did once again send it to Department of Revenue, had a conversation with them, so we may make a few little adjustments to it. But the sense of it is there, and that's fine for our public hearing. Because I understand we're still at draft here until we go through our public hearing and finalize everything. Questions on that?
It goes to the public hearing without us having said we support it?
Because you need to hear from them to get their input before you make a final decision. So if you were to say that, you wouldn't have given them the opportunity to weigh in on what their thoughts are.
The public hearing.
Right.
It's non-binding.
It's, right.
Okay.
So just for, again, just to clarify the chair's question, next week's hearing is not definitive. It's for the board and for administration to hear feedback from the community and still leaves the board the flexibility to adjust a budget accordingly if they hear something that they want to change. And at public here, at the deliberative session, you're actually having a definitive conversation about the proposed budget.
And the public has the opportunity to make those amendments from the floor.
Right. Okay. Gotcha.
So are we good with four? Article Five. This is the one we added to add those two additional classrooms to Mohearmen at the same time as the cafeteria. Questions on that one?
How do we come to $325,000?
Use $200 a square foot, the, which is a reasonable figure per square foot. And so if that were true, then this is approximately the amount of money we would need.
And how do we determine the size of the classrooms?
Well, it's, some guidance, limited, is provided by the Department of Education. But my intent would be if we would, if this passed muster with the board and the public, that we would create a 900-square-foot art room and a 600-square-foot OT occupational therapy room, and then move art out of the classroom wing into the new classroom in order to free up that space for classroom use. So 1,500 square feet.
And within that, will that include bathrooms? I guess because you're not using this as a kindergarten space, it's being used as an art room, as an OT room?
If it's an art room and OT room, we would want to have water in there. And that would be the tentative plan, you know, as they analyze it. And it may be that bringing water to that space would be too difficult and we may have to rethink the two spaces. That's the tentative plan.
And they are being located?
The idea would be to locate them off of the gym, where music happens, where the phys ed happens. So that's an activity area.
So that they project into the existing parking lot?
They project, in this instance, they project towards the back, to the other side of the gym. Not the side where the church is, not the parking lot, but the backside.
Okay. I guess it's difficult to ask these questions without looking at a drawing.
It is. And in that gymnasium, the way it sets, it's not an easy say. They say it's east-northwest. I mean, we could, but I don't have that diagram. So we thought about the backside of the gym, but not the church end.
Should we have some schematic for the budget hearing?
Yes. We have the, we have the drawing that was done for the cafeteria. If this passes muster with you, because ultimately you're going to be either recommending this for, to go forward or not. If this passes muster, then I'll have the architect draw up a schematic for that space as well.
When it says three-fifth majority vote of this board or of the community?
Community.
Community, because it's new construction. And it is taxpayer construction. So the Health Trust holiday would not cover this.
Good. Just trying to understand, so the art room, currently, how big is the art room at Mohearmen?
Was the typical size classroom at Mohearmen, my guess is, and Dennis isn't here, but I would say that the classrooms at Mohearmen are around 800 square feet, give or take.
So that will give a larger space?
Which art should have.
Okay. You need the movement and the flow.
Yeah.
And that provides an extra classroom for instruction. And the part for OT is really restoring that dedicated space.
Yeah. We displaced the OT program this fall because of our need for that one-two classroom that we created. And we're trying to create a space where it's appropriate for that type of therapy and instruction.
Okay.
All set? Article Six, this is the capital reserve fund that's been in existence since 1999, has about $98,000 in it. I want to say it earns about 50 cents a month in interest. So we discussed this last year and the thought was that we should probably dissolve that and put it into our fund balance. Ultimately goes into our retained fund balance.
And just in terms of that particular article, we also, you may recall that the estimate on the Mohearmen cafeteria is about five, I'm going to pull it off the top of my head, which Sue will hate, but it's around $560,000, I believe. And so this, release of this funds would combine with the Health Trust funds, so we don't have a impact on taxpayers. Or, if we don't need it, if the bid price comes in, we're measuring, we're anticipating $225 a square foot for the cafeteria. If it came in at $200 a square foot, then we could use this money for other capital projects, like the heating units at the middle school, that are pretty significant in age and they are part of the capital improvement plan. So, again, if this money was released by the voters, we would put it to good use as articulated in the capital improvement plan.
Set with that?
And if we don't spend it, it just becomes part of our fund balance.
And then Article Seven is your tuition article. We've inserted Barrington, now that you've made the decision. With the dates July 1, 2015, June 30, 2025. And then the provision for the four-year written prior notice of 2021. Questions about that?
Just as a, just a reminder, it takes a positive vote by both the Oyster River voters and the Barrington voters. So both school communities have to vote positively for this contract to be enacted.
You don't really want a question mark at the end of that paragraph.
Oh yeah, you asked that question. You know, in some warrants, they do have a question mark at the end of all of them.
Really?
So I think this is like a boilerplate standard article that we kind of, so I'll remove.
Okay.
No, we won't.
You start with shall.
Yeah.
I guess they all should have a question mark at the end.
Yeah. Good with that one?
It doesn't explain much to the doctor as to how many kids have much money.
And that's part of my town report that I'm writing, Maria, to try to give some, to flesh that out, so we actually could have those at the voting area as informational pieces, if the clerks allow.
So I guess following Maria's question, why, why don't we have that language in the actual warrant?
Because this is authorization language as opposed to explanation language. And it'd be pretty hard to put all of the facets of that agreement into an authorization article.
Even the per pupil cost?
Let us follow through.
Okay.
We'll check with our attorneys.
We can, we can do that. I mean, we have done a little of that.
What kind of numbers, I mean, a minimum and a maximum number of students? I think those things are relative to her.
Okay. We'll see whether, whether we can legitimately incorporate some of that into the warrant article. I mean, I agree, the more that we can put in, the better. But also, past a certain point, it just becomes confusion because of legalese.
But I think the selling part is that they're going to give us a set amount, whether or not.
Absolutely.
And that's a huge selling part, I think.
So for those listening, the chair is alluding to the piece of the contract that's unique and new as if this becomes agreed to by both school communities. And that is that Barrington has agreed to certain benchmarks in time as we go through the years. And we'll say that the benchmark is, for the sake of this conversation, 100 students, and they only give us 75. They're committing to paying 95% of the cost of the 100 students. So it's a way for Oyster River to be guaranteed a certain level of revenue without guessing how many students may or may not show up. So it's a, it is an incredible negotiated part of the contract that really supports Oyster River pretty dramatically.
We good? And then Article Eight is your budget, broken down by each fund. Those numbers have been inserted, starting with Fund 10, your operating budget, the $38,61,624 you approved at your last board meeting. And then I included Fund 21, which is food service, $603,361. Fund 22, that's federal funds, $655,000. And that number I use based on our current, a little conservative on our current allotments for those IDEA, Title I, Title II A funds. And then Fund 23 is just a pass-through fund. That's the one where if we receive any donations, it goes into Fund 23 and just use a figure of $6,000 for that one. And then, so the total budget is the $39,325,985. And then the default budget, and I apologize, I didn't bring the revised form, but we did have a conversation with our attorney about the numbers and made some adjustments to that. It was in regards to the CIP. And my interpretation of it was to take all of that out, because in the past, that's been a separate article. But in our conversations with our attorney, he said it would be reasonable to expect that those projects, which we're committed to and we've continued, would be part of your default. So for instance, the bathrooms, it would make sense that we would include them. Any of the life safety issues that we discussed during the facilities study, we've committed to that, we want to continue that. One-time items would be your generator, so that's not in there. So I added an additional $267,200 to that default budget. So now the difference between the default and the operating budget that you have is down to $543,031.
And is, if I can further add to that, Sue, so what we were talking about today was, God forbid the budget doesn't pass and we go to a default budget, we're able to go into the proposed budget and articulate exactly what makes up that $525,000, $100,000 plus for the generator, the new positions we added and so forth. So those are the one-time expenses that cannot be included in the default budget. So that's why that number's been adjusted.
I just have a question on that. The, the numbers cited in the default budget is the equivalent of the Fund 10.
Right. It's just the operating budget. It's just your operating budget.
And I'm just wondering if, if the language should be clearer, that we're really not comparing 39,325, which is the total. We really should be comparing Fund 10, the 38, with the 37, to make that clearer to the public.
So what we could do is put, should the article be defeated, the operating budget, and we could put Fund 10 only? Would that make it clear?
Something?
Yep.
Along that line?
I just?
If that makes sense to others.
Yeah.
So that's the nice part about where we are in this stage. We continue to refine based on your feedback and hopefully it'll be clear as mud when we get to the finals.
Yeah, because, you know, a lot of this is prescribed by law, the language we use. And I would say that sometimes it is a bit confusing.
Yeah, I would think that if you had, should the article be defeated, the operating budget would be reduced from 38,061 to something like 37,511. Because I think, I think you're right, Kenny, because it's like, somebody, if somebody could look at this and say, hey, I'm going to go for the default budget because we're going to save $2.5 million or something like that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we want people, that's wrong. And I think that we don't want people thinking that.
Okay.
So that's where we stand this evening. We'll go to the public hearing next week. We'll go, it'll still be Sue and I doing the talking. It hasn't shifted to you guys yet. It will soon. And we'll take audience questions and, you know, you'll be there. And if you hear things that you want to fine-tune or finesse between that meeting and finalizing these warrants, then you still have that opportunity.
Kenny?
Just to raise a general concern in getting back to Article Five, the additional classrooms at Mohearmen. I remember last year, just being in the public, and one of the warrant articles that came through was the sustainability warrant. And, and it wasn't really fleshed out for presentation. There was the, the concept of hiring the green team leaders and a budget, but really not specifying what role they were going to play. And I think the discussion at the meeting was really the, the one big focal point of that meeting. That was the one contentious point. And I think as a board, it, and I'm not sure if I support Article Five or not, but I think it really, I think the homework needs to be done for that presentation of really, of really, as you started to tonight, explaining that space, the utilization. And I think it has to tie into our projections where we're having declining enrollment and justify why are we talking about adding space when years down the line, you know, and if that answer is because we want room for full daycare, we want room potentially to bring five in. I just think going into that meeting without very good information sets us up to certainly fail and certainly will set up contention. So that, I've heard that thought out.
Thank you, Sue. We had two options, a two-day workshop in the front and a three-day workshop in the front. Carolyn Eastman, our assistant superintendent, has done yeoman's work on this. We have contractual obligation to reach out to our staff. I would share with the board that 90% of our staff prefer the two-day opening option rather than the three-day opening option, so for, for your information. And it's really at your pleasure whether you want to approve it tonight or not. We're early in the process. It is aligned with Dover. The reason it's aligned with Dover is because of the Technical High School. And it's important for us to keep our calendars relatively in concert with them because we have students who go there for their daily education. And if we're out and they're in, or vice versa, what happens is our high school kids lose. So regionally, with Dover, along with Somersworth and Barrington. And so it's closely aligned with those three school systems because we all share the Dover program. And, you know, as far as Carolyn and I and the administrative team are concerned with the teacher feedback and so forth, I think you'd be in a pretty good place to approve it if you're ready. You've seen it once before.
I always wonder why it comes to us for a vote. I don't know.
It's one of those things because...
If it's good for you, it's good for me.
It's, yeah, I think it comes under your responsibility in terms of contact time with students and making sure that, you know, we're, we're doing what we need to be doing in terms of hours taught and so forth.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. The teacher survey, they had asked for which version?
The two-day.
The two-day.
Opening.
Okay. So that was the initial draft?
Yeah, it was a slam dunk. Amazing, lopsided.
Do you have it? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar, the 214, 215, 2015, with the two-day workshop at the start of the school day.
Move, Kenny? Seconded by, um, discussion. And?
I'd like to compliment you, Dr. Morse, for changing the format a little bit and leaving the end of school and graduation open to be determined.
Yeah. Thanks for raising that, and not in terms of the compliment, but in terms of giving me an opportunity to, to address it right now. Both Principal Allen and myself are getting inquiries about graduation. So again, I'm going to take the So again, I'm going to take the opportunity with the camera and your questioning, your compliment, to let the public know that based on our experience last year where we had a very definitive date in the calendar, and then we had hurricanes and snow days and boiler days and so forth, and it turned into an incredibly complicated mess for Principal Allen, we went, we reverted back to past practice, which was not to define the graduation day until we get through winter. So as an example, if we used winter right up to Christmas vacation, we would have thought, hey, we're, we're doing great, we've used no snow days. And then boom, just as we're coming back, we end up with two, boom, just like that. And then delayed start and so forth. So although we're getting very assertive inquiries about when graduation is going to happen, Todd and I agreed this week that we really don't feel comfortable giving that proposed date to you until we hit March. And then we'll have a pretty good sense. But as I said to Todd, even March and April can be touchy months in New England, but we do need to give parents and extended families enough notice. And then, you know, as Todd and I were talking about, if circumstances change dramatically with weather in March and April, I think at that point Todd and I would be comfortable coming forward and saying, you know, we have no crystal ball, but we're going to ask the board for this special exemption and honor for the seniors to graduate on the date we announce. Because we don't want to repeat the sins of the past where people are coming from foreign lands, buying expensive tickets, et cetera, et cetera. So I appreciate seniors and their families, extended families, parents being patient with us because the worst thing that we could do is make an announcement this early and then be right back where we were last spring. So.
Fall-up question. How has it gone so far this year with changing from going half-days for professional development to teacher workshop days to full days?
Well, you know, we haven't asked the parental community, we only have anecdotal reports. That seems to be going extremely well from the parent's perspective because they can plan and so forth. From the professional staff perspective, extremely well. I mean, teachers have been very responsive to the whole day. We're getting so much more quality time on the issues. I share with the board, just yesterday, the administrative team got together and we actually talked about the strategic plan, which is, as Todd could tell you, I was kind of giddy like a child at the meeting because I was so excited about talking about something that was so important to us. And, you know, we laid out initial action strategies to work with staff and, you know, we'll use February's administrative team meetings with their staffs and March's workshop to really get the strategic plan finally into the hands it belongs in, which is our staff, so we can build this plan from the ground up and, and really have something to be proud of. So I think it's gone great, Ian. I, I have not personally, nor has Carolyn shared with me or any administrator, any negative feedback of going to whole, whole days. So, doesn't mean there's an out there, we just haven't been told. So I would say very good. Todd, would you agree with that?
For the conference, hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Succeed in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And then the next item on the agenda, Madam Chair, is the concept of charging Barrington students for seats on Oyster River buses. So the history of this is previous board, I don't know if they ever took formal action, but Lisa, our transportation director, and I are under the impression that the board took action that indicated that Barrington students who come to Oyster River could not be on Oyster River buses because it's not part of the Barrington agreement. So currently, we do have an agreement with Barrington, not the long-term contract we talked about earlier, but an annual contract. And in fact, we'll be talking about that later. So annually, Barrington says, we'll pay X for our students to attend Oyster River High School, but at no point do we ever articulate a cost associated with transportation. And in the new agreement that we are asking the voters to consider, it's still not considered. So, I had a conversation with the superintendent in Barrington, I had a conversation with our school's attorney around the idea of seeing if parents were interested in paying for a ride to school, essentially. And the lawyer said it's okay, the superintendent in Barrington didn't see any objection from her side. So Lisa and I calculated that the cost of a to-and-from bus ride in the district is approximately $5. Over the course of the year, it's approximately $1,000, you know? And I say approximately, it's not down to the penny, but that's the working model that we were using. So I, I called Maria as chair and said, what do you think if I survey the parents in Barrington? She thought it was okay to do, and so we did. And Todd had, of the 70 students, 21 families responded, five said maybe we would do that, but 16 definitely said they would want to do that. So I wanted to present the concept. If the board was agreeable to that concept, then I would work out particulars with Lisa that we would share with the families who want the service. First of all, you know, we won't add a bus, you know, at $5 a pop, you know, the, the children would have to fit on buses that we currently have that service our, our district. And in many cases, as you know, literally cross into Barrington. And in fact, in Lee, there's the road that I'll never remember the name of, that it starts in Lee, it turns into, Donnington? Yep. And then it turns into Barrington, and it turns back into Lee. So the bus literally has to go through this loop because there's no way of backing out once you're in it. And so, you know, it's sort of a no-brainer in, in that particular neighborhood. The other thing that we talked about was, you know, a common drop-off point. If it wasn't a logical bus ride, maybe it's logical to drop off the kids at the middle school in Barrington as an example. So we would put protocols in place that would make sure that we didn't add to our cost and that the Barrington families had at least the option of, of getting on our bus. We've had a number of Barrington families who have approached us over the course of this fall in particular, looking for some kind of relief. Their own school district didn't feel they could afford to put a bus on the road for the kids coming to Oyster River. And quite honestly, obviously neither did we, but if they pay their freight on the bus, then I thought it was, you know, at least a reasonable solution. And wanted to know how you guys felt about it.
Kenny.
It seemed that there is not an investment on our part. It's not as if we're making a capital investment buying a bus. And so I really can't see any reason not to try to trial something like this and see where it goes. And I like the idea of a common drop-off. Students who go to Barrow Academy, I think they have a common drop-off in the Mill Plaza. And I think that that serves those children well, and I think that might work well for Barrington.
I think that something we could consider as well is to work up a punch card or a, it's a, it's a card that has five rides on it. And I would feel badly having them having to pay $1,000 upfront and then find themselves a position where they didn't need it.
Thanks for that, Ian. The, the question I asked of all people in relation to this issue was Doris. Because Doris has a point-of-sale system for the food, for the food program. And I reached out to her to see whether we could create a point-of-sales program specifically for this issue. And the good news is, we can. So we could actually create an account where parents deposit money in the same way they buy food. And so we wouldn't have to, bus drivers wouldn't have to handle money, there wouldn't have to be a little clingy thing like in a public transportation bus, they could just do it through their debit card or credit card and pay. One of the things we did talk about, though, is that it's, that they would have to do it at least by the month so that we wouldn't have to, you know, spend an enormous amount of time tracking. And if the child was absent, that's, you know, we're not going to try to track individual rides. It's, you know, pay by the month, this is how much it is, and, you know, no, no refunds. Because we don't want to turn it into an administrative nightmare. We're trying to do something good for people who need a ride, we don't want to create more work for ourselves.
And environmentally.
Yeah, I was going to add that, I think that's part of our sustainability was to reduce the number of cars. And if you've ever come to the high school in the morning at the drive, it's insane here. So less cars is probably a better thing.
What about time on the bus for our students?
Well, I mean, I think that's all part of what we, I mean, we're going through roads anyway. I don't think we drag our kids up into the Barrington Middle School, we take care of our routes and then scoot them up to a common, whether that's a common drop-off point or not, as an example. I don't think we add to our runs. And I think we have to, you know, Lisa and I can put together the protocols and bring them back to you, and, and I think they'll all make sense in the end. We've had a pretty good conceptual discussion, but I really didn't want to push it until I had some kind of green light from, from the board.
Okay.
So maybe if I had.
Do you see a motion?
Do you want a motion?
Would you, would you please, just so I know I'm authorized to push through this?
Al.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to investigate charging Barrington students for busing.
Providing.
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 Moved by Al, second by Kenny.
Thank you.
Discussion. Hearing none, could we have a vote, please? Succeed in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Yeah, and we'll work on this pretty aggressively because these parents have been struggling, and you can imagine in this cold and all of that, that it's really inconvenient if they can jump on our buses. So we'll make this a priority.
Superintendent sections, none.
No, I don't have any, thank you. But I am asking you to make some.
Motion to approve one-year Barrington memorandum of understanding for tuition students for 2015.
Yeah, for 2014-15, yeah. I alluded to this earlier. This is a continuation of the one-year agreements that we've had with Barrington for the last, must be eight years now. And it's essentially saying that we'll continue to accept their, their students at a set rate. And I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's 13,000 for students who are not special ed and an additional 7,000 who are. And that's a pretty reasonable place for us to be, short of a long-term contract. And Catherine Ford has agreed that that's a pretty reasonable place for us to be, and so I would recommend that we do that. Again, it doesn't include transportation. It's, it's what we've been approving year in and year out.
Ann.
I have a couple of questions about this document. The first is line item number one, where it states that we'll accept an unlimited number of Barrington High School eligible students. My recollection in our last discussion is that we have a ceiling, we have a minimum and we have a ceiling.
Sure.
So this does not reflect that, that information or that.
Remember, this is the one-year agreement. We currently have 70 students. We're not going to get, you know, predictably 80, 85 students in the upcoming year, we can handle all of that. So this is, this is, is not the step-up language that we have in the long-term contract. What we, well, actually, what we thought we would have this year was about 80 students, right, Todd? And then four of them moved into the district, so they had that revenue. And the other six students made different decisions. So I, we're, we're safe with that language, is we're not going to get 400 kids showing up tomorrow.
And so then, my second question is on item number seven, where we state that price at 13,000 is, and special ed at seven, what happened to our 14,5?
If you took those numbers and blended them, that's, that's the number you would get approximately. So right now, the way that we have done it for the last year is we've charged $6,000 for the special ed students and 13,000 for the regular. But as I talked to Catherine, she said that the more accurate number would be closer.
So this is an interim document until.
One-year interim.
Until our file document.
Exactly.
Commences.
Yeah, this is the one that you have the authority to approve because it's not a long-term contract. The difference between this and what we have in the warrant articles is it's a multi-year contract. In the warrant article, this is one year at a time.
Should we add to this, this contract that we make part of the transportation available?
No. We haven't accounted for that, and Barrington, that would be a, a two-way conversation, and I don't think Barrington is, is ready yet to commit to that. I think as numbers increase on the long-term contract, Barrington will reconsider its position, or it may actually reach out to us and say, if we contracted a bus through you, would you? So I think that's, that's a future issue, but, but not, not this upcoming year.
So following that, that future issue, we have a, in the long-term agreement, we have a ceiling of 200 students.
Correct.
What if all 200 students elected to be bused? I think that we need to have some language that reflects or, or speaks to that possibility and that it's no longer $5 a ride, because that would then probably require a bus.
Yeah, no, the, the long-term warrant article agreement specifically says that busing is not provided. So the $5 a ride piece is, again, to address our current situation, but it's not a long-term commitment.
So that would, that, it's good to make that clear.
Yeah, will do. Thank you.
Kenny.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the one-year Barrington memorandum of understanding as written for tuition students for the school calendar year 2014, 2015.
That was moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. As it reads to me, the tuition, I'm assuming the special education students are an additional 7,000.
Correct.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah, it is, in addition to. That's the practice we've been using.
But could we say that? Because it says tuition. Tuition will be as follows.
So, Ken, you can take that as a friendly amendment?
I'd take it as a very friendly amendment.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
And Al, are you happy with?
I'm totally happy with it.
Thank you.
As written with.
Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Succeed in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Is 13,000 plus.
Motion to approve a request for a Merharamet paraprofessional leave of absence for the remainder of the 2013-14 school year. Ann.
I make a motion to approve the request for a Merharamet paraprofessional leave of absence for the remainder of the 2013-14 school year.
Is there a second? Seconded by Al. Just a question, she requested if she can't come back because of medical status, that she would work in the office. Is there work in the office if she comes back?
Well, the way it's worded is if she is cleared, she would like to. So it would depend on whether there was work available.
All right. Discussion.
And would we limit that to just one elementary school, or would we make it, the option open for either?
Well, I would analyze it at the time. If she comes in with a doctor's note and says she's ready to work and she wants to do some work and we have it available, I would ask the principals what, what they have. And, you know, I would also ask Sue whether we can afford to do that.
Could we have a show of hands, please? Succeed in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries. Motion to approve list of winter coach volunteers. Ann.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the list of winter coach volunteers for Oyster River High School.
Moved by Ann. Seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Ann.
I'd like to thank our volunteers in advance.
Further comments, questions? Could we have a show of hands, please? Succeed in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries. School board committee updates. Al.
I have a quick one. ABC met, and it was kind of a wrap-up meeting since.
the process this year, were very complimentary on everybody working on it, so it's good.
Nice.
Great, thank you. The policy committee has finally, I hope, got the date for next Wednesday at 9:30.
And Madam Chair, just in terms of the order of the agenda tonight, it's very possible that the board will want to come back into public session, so I would move adjournment until after non-public meetings that you're going to ask for.
Is that always listed before?
Yes.
Okay. Other comment?
No, I just have a question. Are we going to discuss our trifold document and the postcard?
I don't have it there, but you can ask the board if you, Chair.
It was, this was on our agenda. It was taken off the agenda.
Yeah.
So it never made it from one agenda to the second agenda. On purpose or?
No. Not on purpose. So you want to ask the board if they want to?
Yes, but the board's.
Tonight or?
Tonight, because you need to get it printed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So do you want to ask the board?
Yes, but the board's.
Tonight or?
Tonight, because you need to get it printed.
Okay.
Um.
So do you want to ask the board?
Does the board wish to discuss this? The deadly silence?
What are we discussing?
Ann has asked that we have a quick conversation about the trifold that I put together for the budget vote.
Oh, oh, right.
I just have a few quick comments.
Okay. Anybody object?
No.
One thought I had was that, but time of the essence, it may not be possible. In the vision statement, the first paragraph has some grammatical flaws. So whether or not it needs to go to the Communication Committee to take a quick look at and to correct the community, or if Tom wants to take a look at it and correct the grammatical flaws. It's just a series of moving some semicolons and some commas around, but it's, that's some grammatical flaws. On the, under our schools, we list class size guidelines and it says max class size. And I'm concerned that that should say guideline class size because there may be times where it's out of our control and we have one more child in a class than is optimal. And so I don't want.
That comes from policy, though, doesn't it?
Correct. But also, I don't know that, that policy, does the policy say max? Or it says guideline?
Good reason, that's the policy. I don't know if it says max or not.
So we can take a look at that and then maybe that's going to come back to policy. I also found the document to be somewhat lacking in fairness to shining a light on the success of our staff. And I know in past documents, we've, we've celebrated their accomplishments and we've talked about what advanced degrees our staff has. And I don't see that here. And I feel that their presence is absent from this whole document. So in celebrating our staff's constant learning and I think we need something in here that celebrates their accomplishments. So whether, I know other districts talk about what advanced degrees their teachers have. And I know that we have a, you and I have talked about this, that we have an enormous proportion of our staff that hold advanced degrees.
And that is part of the public record at the Department of Education, so I think it's well worth putting in there.
So I would like to see that. Then, under the 2014 budget for general fund, it discussed major drivers and expenditures. And salaries were increased and benefits were increased. Whose salaries and whose benefits? Is it every employee in the district? Is it, is it teaching staff? It just needs a little more explanation because it's not clear.
Okay.
Then there's a paragraph that describes, "The district on the second page is a, is made up of three separate towns. It is a single political unit that operates under the rules of RSA 40:13. This means that the district votes by official ballot rather than the traditional town meeting form of government. All of the registered voters in the three communities make up the legislative body that elects a seven-member political board to govern the district." I think it would be helpful to add there that we are an apolitical body. While this is a political process, we are not a political board. And then I have a question. Under the proposed share of the FY14 budget by location, we break out special ed high school, middle school, maintenance, mohairat, Massway, district transportation. Is food service included with each school? Because it doesn't have its own line item. So whether or not it could have its own line item, because in past years, that's been a real hot point, how much the district has to contribute to food service to keep it afloat. So.
Do you have all your suggestions?
I could, I'll be happy to hand this to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. I've written them down and I will.
And then on the postcard, January 22 through 4:00 p.m. on January 31 is the filing period for school district openings. It would be nice to list the locations of where folks who are interested in filing actually file.
I think it's too late for that because that's going out tomorrow.
Okay. Well, it was a nice thought. We could actually, we can announce it here. Where are the locations that people file?
I believe it's in our office or the clerk.
So is it at each, each town clerk? At each town hall, their town clerks? Or is it just?
Could you speak to the mic so that the public get this vital information?
My understanding, it's either at our office, they would come to file, or they would contact the school district clerk, Bill Leslie, and go to his house. Is that where, when you?
I did it at the town.
I thought it was the town hall.
I did it actually at the SAU.
You did it at the SAU, yeah.
But I was going to say, just as a, you know, since that's going to be printed, you could always put that in Friday updates and the lead down cry or that. You know, if there's any amendment, you can throw that out.
I saw something last week, but I don't know if it said locations, yeah.
See if we can slip something in. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Anything else from the board? Now, we'll go to public comment. The deathly signs, I would say.
I call it heaven.
The heavenly sign. Our future meeting dates. We've done number one, two. So we'll meet next week at the public hearing. And then we have, have a meeting the next night.
We do, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would want to kind of project to you and Tom as the schedulers of our agendas that we may want to strategically relocate the February meeting. Because you may recall, the town adjournment asked us to give up our board meeting night in order to accommodate their legal requirements and posting. And that creates a huge vacuum between our second meeting in January and our only meeting in February, which is late in the month. So I would ask whether we might move it to the point on the calendar between where those two meetings usually. Just to be thinking about that.
Is this, is next week the last meeting in January?
Yeah.
It's the second?
Yeah, because of the way the calendar fell, we came in right after New Year's.
Yes, okay.
So you're asking for February 12?
Pulling it up right now, Madam Chair, if I don't misspeak.
February 12 is the bilingual.
That's the language meeting of presentation.
Right. So we, we lost the 5th and we're scheduled for the 19th. So what I would suggest, Madam Chair, is we consider moving the 19th to the 12th, the following week's vacation week, anyway, and have one meeting strategically located in February rather than one meeting so late in February that.
And this works with the manifests?
I asked Sue about that today, and we may have to have those who are in the manifest committee meet to do the warrants. But I'll let her watch that and make a recommendation to you who are on the manifest committee to make a decision about whether they're coming in.
So we have a meeting the 15th, and it's currently formatted, we don't have anything till the 19th of February.
Normally, you would have one on the 5th.
And what's the town doing?
What was the reason the town asked us?
Originally because of the election. They didn't have contests, so they could have a new election. They have a special election for the president. So they asked us to reschedule because they would have had to have a primary. They didn't because it was a contest.
And what day is the deliberative session?
The 5th.
It's, it's, okay, okay. Should we have a school board meeting on a non-Wednesday? Does that make sense?
I think what we should do is, is see what, what the issues are that are coming up and then let the chair and vice chair decide whether an additional meeting is necessary. I'm just pointing it out now because I see a big hole.
Right.
Between that meeting in January and that meeting in February. So my recommendation is to hit in the middle. But, you know, if things develop where Maria and Tom think it's important for us to meet twice, then we could meet that, the Wednesday before our scheduled meeting, do back-to-back like we're doing this month. Back-to-back is really difficult because of the preparation of documents and so forth. So it's not the ideal. If we don't need it, I'd just as soon keep it to one. But if the board chair and vice chair think we need two, then we'll have to do them back-to-back.
Okay. So the suggestion is to move maybe the 19th to the 12th?
Exactly. That would be what I would ask you to consider.
Okay.
Okay. Process here. Now we're going into non-public session for an employee request.
Yeah, that, may I make a recommendation, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The employee is not here. I would use that as a last. We do have a potential negotiated agreement related to a lawsuit that has been filed. And I would recommend to the board that we do a non-public meeting related to whether we have a conceptual agreement to settle that lawsuit, and then come back out in public meeting and execute the details if the board so desires, so that we can do the business of the board in a more efficient manner, since that employee that you just alluded to is not.
Okay. If somebody wishes to make the following motion, entering to non-public meeting pursuant to 91-a:3, Section 2, Subsection E, pending consideration or negotiations of pending claims litigation. Does somebody want to make that?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I thought you might.
You read my mind.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al.
And you'll need a roll call vote, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Anne Lane, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
H. R. L., yes.
That's six in the affirmative.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I inform Peter that he doesn't have to wait for us and that he can call it a night? That would be wonderful.
Let me think about that.
Yes, you may.
Non-public meeting?
Made by Kenny, seconded by Al.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Anne Lane, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
H. R. L., aye.
Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Did you find that language?
I didn't. Of course not.
Okay. Do you want me to take it from here?
I have too many papers. Yes, please.
All righty. Thank you, Board, for the non-public meeting. We are now back in public session to discuss a potential settlement with David Taylor in relation to his lawsuit against our school district and member Megan Turnbull. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about the concepts behind the settlement. They include a number of policy changes, a reimbursement to Mr. Taylor for his filing fees, and a statement by board member Turnbull. In exchange, Mr. Taylor will withdraw his suit with prejudice, meaning that it's done. And.
When? Can we have a date for that?
Friday. Yeah, thanks, Sue. And so the general concepts have been agreed to by Mr. Taylor and requires the execution of certain policy changes. I'll be asking the board this evening to suspend its normal process of a first read, second read over a two-board, regular board meeting process, and do the first read and a second read this evening. So the first run-through would be first read. Second run-through will be second read.
Do you need a motion for that?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through these one at a time. I think that a motion would be in order to suspend our normal rules, Madam Chair.
That's, okay. I'd like to make a motion that due to the circumstances and timing, that the board make an exemption from its usual format whereby instead of having a first read followed by a second read of a policy two weeks later at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, instead that today we proceed with the first read and if accepted, go right to a second read.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al.
And just in terms of, I'm going to need a vote. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Five in the affirmative, one in opposition?
Probably in terms of not getting lost in this process. If we stay with one process, one policy, do the first read, have the discussion, and then the second read, and then have a discussion, then the chair can call for a vote. And that way, we can make sure that we do all the work we need to do. The other thing before I start that I have in share with either the chair or Mr. Taylor, because I thought of it coming down the hall, was that because of the amount of work that is in front of you, I would ask the board to have a motion that gives me permission to make non-substantive changes like references and updating dates and so forth, grammatical issues, because I already know that, not being a perfect person, I can see already that I need to make some of those. So if I could get a motion from the board to be able to do non-substantive changes to make sure all references, grammar, and so forth are correct.
Ann?
I'd like to make a motion that the board gives Dr. Morse the authority to make non-substantive changes to the following policies, which I then offer to the board that we accept for first and second read as a slate. Policy code BBAA, policy BDG, policy BDB, policy BDF, policy BEA, policy BEDH, policy BHE, policy BEDD, policy BEDG. That's it.
Is there a second? That was made by Ann and seconded by Al.
Just let me be. Does that meet the needs of our purpose to handle them as a slate?
It does. It expedites the process. Both Mr. Taylor and the Board Chair are well aware of the minor changes that were made to the packet that you received. And as long as, there's no objection from the Board, and I would, in this case, extend that to Mr. Taylor, then I think that expedites the process pretty effectively.
So these changes then included in that motion, is that correct?
That's my understanding, from the way Ms. Lane addressed it.
Al?
There was, in this part, there was one small, minor change or amendment that was to be made, and I, the life of me cannot remember. Yeah, it's, and I had mentioned to Mr. Taylor, this potentially could have come up tonight, and it deals with policy...
BEA.
BEA, related to the language that directs the Chair to seek verbal reasoning from each Board Member. Mr. Taylor and I talked about that this afternoon, and he understands that the Board may want something that's a little softer, in terms of encourages the Chair to seek the reasoning behind a given vote of a Board Member, rather than mandate it. So we have had that conversation. So I could consider that as part of Ann's motion, since David has already said that that works for him, and from Ann's motion, it would work.
Okay. The second paragraph in BEA, okay.
Well, I have a hard time with this. Not that the policies are unpalatable completely, but I object to the process. I object to the suppression of representative government. It started out as one thing and grew into another. So I will not vote for these policies. Yeah?
I must return to policy BCA, school board ethics. And if I follow these with my heart, I cannot support this motion.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hand in the affirmative? Four in the affirmative, in opposition. Anne Lane and Maria Barth in opposition. Motion carries.
And then, Madam Chair, I believe we're at motion to adjourn.
We need to, do we need to formally do a second read?
No, Ann's motion said she's moving the slate as a first and second read, and so we're...
Al?
Motion to adjourn.
Was there a second non-public on the agenda?
Oh, the, yes, we do have one non-public, and I would suggest the Board just stay here. It has nothing to do with this particular issue, David, and I'll communicate with you and Maria in relation to a document to sign. Thank you, David.
I move to, oh, we'll get the rate coding of that, is...
Alex?
We are just going to end this transmission, because we have one other non-public item that does not relate to the lawsuit and deals with that personnel issue.